We will begin the meeting at 3:30. Roll call, Sam.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Soylou.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Okay, let's move to adopt the agenda. We have a modification. Staff would like to remove items A26, A28, A29, and A30, and bring it back at a later date. So those are the modifications of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Pearson, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Soylou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-0. Do we have any community input on closed session items? Seeing none, we will move to closed session. The items are A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation; B, public employee discipline dismissal, release employment, number 202409 HR; C, public employee discipline dismissal, release employment; D, conference with labor negotiator. And we will return to open session at 6:00 p.m. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:01 p.m. I want to have a couple readouts from our closed session. The first, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the dismissal of classified employee number 202409 HR, effective May 20, 2025. The roll call was six ayes, zero noes. Let's just call that six yeses, zero noes. In closed session, number two is, in closed session, the board took action to release and nonreelect 166 temporary certificated employees pursuant to Education Code Section 44954, effective at the end of the 2024-2025 school year, and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notice. The roll call vote was six yeses, zero noes. Additionally, we modified the agenda in our earlier open session, and we removed 18-- sorry, we removed 18A26, 18A28, and 18A29, and 18A30. And staff directed us to remove those, and we will bring them back at a later date. All right, now let's continue on with our new open session. Okay, opening ceremonies, moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance, led by our student board member, Devoni.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have adoption of the minutes from our meeting on April 22, 2025?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Crane, seconded by--
Second.
I'll second it. Second by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Soylou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
All right, now we're into recognitions. A great time of year to recognize those folks that provide such exceptional service to our students of Newport Mesa. We're going to recognize the 2025-2026 Teacher of-- sorry, yes, 2026 Teacher of the Year. Oh. Oh, so--
Okay.
Before that, we get started on the recognitions, we have two speakers that would like to speak on behalf of the people that are being recognized. If they would want to speak now before the recognitions, or they can speak when we have public comment. The first one is Robert LaBounty, if he would like to speak now. Yes.
Hello, NMUSD Board members, and president and superintendent. My name is Robbie LaBounty. I'm a district rep with Orange County Supervisor Katrina Foley, who represents the fabulous 5th District. And I want, on behalf of our office, I have some certificates of recognition for the teachers, the administrators, and the employees who are being honored tonight, and one as well for the winter champion of the wrestler at 144, who ended up winning the CIF Southern section. And I was a wrestler myself, so I was very happy to make one for the toughest 144-pounder in the CIF Southern section. So if you would bear with me, I will leave them up here, and you can by all means grab them. Roxanna Rain, Teacher of the Year, congratulations.
We can pass these out later, but you can leave them up there. Yes, you know, you can say the names, and then we'll leave them up there and pass them out later.
Teacher of the Year, Carolina Escobar, congratulations. Matthew Burns, Teacher of the Year, congratulations. Kelly Davis, NMUSD Employee of the Year, congratulations. Yasenia Rosales, NMUSD Employee of the Year, congratulations. Then we have Dr. Lori Hogard, Administrator of the Year, congratulations. Lisa Snowden, Administrator of the Year, congratulations. And my personal favorite, Demian Prima, wrestling champion at 144, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person to speak is, I think it's Lillian Holler, if you want to speak now.
I'm no wrestler like Robbie, but good evening, everyone. I'm Lillian Holler, here on behalf of Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norris, and I wanted to recognize all of the outstanding honorees tonight. The certificates we prepared are just a small token of appreciation compared to what you've given this district. So to the Newport Mesa teachers, classified employees, and accomplished athletes, congratulations. Your dedication to education, guiding the next generation, and serving as exemplary role models for the community is greatly appreciated. And we hope you feel truly valued today and every day, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, now to our recognition, Leona Olson.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to call to the podium Rhonda Reed, NMFT president, to acknowledge our Teacher of the Year recipients.
Thank you, Leona Olson. So also thank you to all the trustees and Dr. Smith cabinet that came out for the celebration of the Teacher of the Years. You made them feel very special and valued. And we want to thank Katrina Foley, who stayed the whole time and jumped onstage and also celebrated them. So we have three school site Teacher of the Year, but they were finalists, and now they will represent the district at the county. So they're district Teacher of the Year, so we have three of them who will go on to that competition as well. So I would like to invite Matt Burns up here. Congratulations. So we got to go to Matt's classroom, the Teacher of the Year committee, and what a treat. They were making 3D replicas of the human heart. And one thing we really noticed is that every student felt comfortable. He had built mutually respectful relationships with each one of them. He also is alumni at Newport Harbor High, and he has taught there 27 years. And I think he coached practically every sport there is there. He's currently the head football coach. And whether it's a classroom or his athletes, he wants to instill character and trust and confidence in them, making athletes and students to reach their full potential. So congratulations. I hope all of you get to give out to the schools for these district Teacher of the Years, because they're extraordinary, whether it's your area or not. So next is Roxanna Rain from Enson Intermediate. So Roxanna has been a teacher for 24 years at Enson Intermediate. She is amazing. Not only does she inspire generations of students with her belief that math should be accessible, meaningful, empowering, and fun. Yeah, math class, she made it fun. Watching her teach, we all wished we had a math teacher like her when we were in middle school. Her classroom is vibrant space where a growth mindset is not just taught, but lived. So congratulations, Roxanna. So our third and last district Teacher of the Year is Carolina Escobar from Wilson Elementary. I don't think she made it here tonight, but she's been teaching--
It's her son's open house.
Oh, well, family first. She's been teaching at Wilson 24 years, kindergarten teacher. Again, kindergarten was not like that for me. It was extraordinary, the type of content and just how she wove and tailored the academics, along with play and creativity. Truly extraordinary. She's just so deserving of this award. Thank you.
Right, now we have, we're going to recognize the Newport Mesa Unified School District's 2025 Classified School Employees of the Year recipients. Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you. It gives me great pleasure to introduce and call up to the podium Kristin Clark, our administrative director of classified personnel, who will be recognizing our classified school employee recipients.
President Wigan, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Smith, this evening, we are proud to recognize two outstanding individuals as part of the California Classified School Employee of the Year program. This statewide initiative honors classified employees who exemplify excellence in service and demonstrate a profound impact on the student, staff, and communities they support. Here in Newport Mesa, our classified employees are essential to the success of our schools. They create welcoming, supportive environments, and play a vital role in promoting student achievement and well-being, often behind the scenes, but always in the heart of our campuses. Tonight, I'm honored to join the board and our Personnel Commissioners, Susan Meyer, Tristan Ailey, and Charli Matoya in celebrating the dedication, leadership, and compassion of our 2025 Classified Employees of the Year. It is my honor to recognize Kelly Davis as one of our district's Classified Employees of the Year. Kelly serves as the school administrative assistant at Bagby High School, and for over 20 years, she has been the glue that holds that campus together. Kelly's deep knowledge, efficiency, and commitment to excellence ensure that everything, from budgeting and attendance to communication, runs smoothly. But what truly sets her apart is the care she brings to every interaction. Whether helping a student prepare for a senior project interview or simply offering a listening ear, Kelly leads with compassion. At Bagby, a continuation school serving at Promise students, Kelly plays a vital role in creating a positive, inclusive environment. She supports school spirit through ASB events and helps students build confidence, like coaching them on handshakes and eye contact before their interviews. An example of her generosity occurred during one of these senior project interviews when a student expressed excitement over a dressy jacket that belonged to Kelly. And without hesitation, she handed it over to the student, because that's just who Kelly is. Kelly's impact extends beyond her title. She is a key leader in WASC reviews, data collection, and day-to-day coordination. Her weekly updates, problem-solving, and calm leadership make her a go-to for staff across campus. As a teacher put it, "We couldn't do it without her." Kelly embodies the values of dedication, kindness, and collaboration. Her work makes a daily difference, and her influence will be felt for years to come. Congratulations, Kelly, and thank you for everything you do.
Oh, it's from Cottie Petry. You got a lot. That's why we have so many people to hold these things for you. If you want to, Scott, do you want to get in the photo? Yeah, we need you to hold the certificate, come on.
You'll be coming back. It's a privilege to recognize Yasenia Rosales as our other Classified Employee of the Year. Yasenia serves as one of the district lead instructional assistants for the Expanded Learning Programs in Newport Mesa, and her work is nothing short of extraordinary. Yasenia exemplifies servant leadership, creating spaces where students feel safe, valued, and supported. Through her calm demeanor and restorative approach, she not only addresses challenges, but transforms them into learning opportunities, helping students grow socially, emotionally, and academically. Whether she's coordinating daily operations or launching creative initiatives like student clubs at College Park Elementary, a PENPAL program that connects students across sites, or a mariachi class, Yasenia goes the extra mile. When students struggled with music content, she took it upon herself to learn the instruments and support them outside of class time. That's the kind of dedication she brings every day. Yasenia's impact also extends to her colleagues. She mentors staff, leads professional development, and fosters a positive, inclusive culture across school sites. Her colleagues consistently describe her as dependable, compassionate, and uplifting, a leader you can count on in any situation. Whether planning a district-wide carnival, calming a nervous student, or helping a colleague problem-solve, Yasenia leads with empathy and purpose. She embodies the spirit of expanded learning, enriching lives beyond the classroom. We are proud to honor Yasenia tonight, not just for what she does, but for who she is, a true role model, a community builder, and a beacon of compassion and leadership in our district. She is also selected to be one of nine Orange County Employees of the Year. Congratulations, Yasenia, and thank you for the many ways you inspire us all. Before I leave, I'd just like to extend my sincere appreciation to the board, Dr. Smith, and the Personnel Commission, because you always support this very valuable recognition program. And we are grateful for the opportunity to celebrate and honor our remarkable Newport Mesa Classified Employees of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some other recognitions, recognizing a National Board certified teacher. Ms. Olson.
Thank you, good evening. It's such a pleasure to be here tonight to acknowledge our most recent recipients or teachers who have completed their National Board certification. And I think it's always important to recognize what work that went into this. But to give you a little bit of background, is the National Board is-- their mission is to advance the quality of teaching and learning at a very high level. And the foundation is based on national standards and six propositions. So teachers must be committed to students and their learning, know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students, be responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, think systematically about their practice and learn from experience, and be members of a learning community. They also must complete and demonstrate through four components. They have to demonstrate their contact knowledge in a portfolio, and then the portfolio also must include differentiation in instruction, teaching practice and learning environment, and how they are effective and a reflective practitioner. So while these are things that we expect of all teachers, the National Board certification takes it to a whole other level. In fact, that it is extremely difficult to obtain. I would acknowledge, we have only 34 of our teachers in our district that have a National Board, and statewide, it's only 3% of all certificated teachers. So it's quite the remarkable achievement. And so to acknowledge and celebrate, I've actually asked the principals to speak just a little bit about our two candidates. And so I'm going to ask Amanda Estrada to come and speak about Alexander Bouillon.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Unfortunately, Alex isn't here tonight, but it is an honor to recognize him as one of our outstanding educators. Alex Bouillon is our highly regarded physical education teacher, and this is a remarkable achievement, earning National Board certification. He has served Newport Mesa for 10 years now, first as a special education instructional aide, and now as a PE teacher at Newportale, Whittier, and Kelly Brook. Mr. Bouillon is more than just a teacher, oops. He's a role model, a mentor, and a consistent source of positivity for our students. Not affectionately by all, as Coach B, he has built an incredible rapport with students. They absolutely love his class, not just because it's active and fun, but because they know they are seen, supported, and challenged. Coach B strikes that rare and perfect balance. He brings structure and holds high expectations, while always making room for enthusiasm and fun. He makes sure that every student, regardless of skill level, feels successful and included. Whether it's a student who excels athletically or one just learning the basics, every child leaves his class feeling valued. What truly sets Coach B apart is the way he integrates lessons on sportsmanship and citizenship into every game and activity. He is committed to helping our students grow, not only as athletes, but as respectful, responsible, and kind individuals. Coach B is a thoughtful, collaborative colleague and a trusted team member who contributes meaningfully to our school community. National Board certification is a prestigious and rigorous accomplishment, and Coach B has absolutely earned it. We are so proud of him, and even more grateful to have him as part of our school district. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call upon Randy Lampert to come up to acknowledge Karen Flamson, who is earning her National Board certification as generalist and middle childhood.
Yes, of course.
Taryn actually started as an instructional assistant here in our district as well. She's also actually started in kindergarten here in our district. So she is a product of the Newport Mesa School District and truly represents the absolute best in this district. I have the utmost respect for this teacher. She's been in the district for over 20 years. She's served at Lincoln, East Bluff, and her favorite school, Harborview. Taryn embodies an absolute thoughtful and strategic approach to being an educator, to being a sixth-grade teacher. And I think what sets Taryn apart from all these accomplishments and even above the National Board certification, which almost seems impossible, is just how she makes connections with families and students across our entire school. She will do that by going to their sport mat games and go to their performances. She knows everything about them, and they come back to see her. They always see, "Where's Flammy?" And she's absolutely adored. Her success in the classroom and beyond really highlights her deep, reflective practices. She consistently has a drive to refine her skills and her open and honest approach, her open and honest approach with her principal, too, which I absolutely love and respect. She is determined to be the absolute best for her students. She is known by her colleagues as being collaborative, she's contagious, she's spirited, she loves being up here right now, and this. But she really makes learning relevant and vibrant for all of our students, and Harborview and our school district is incredibly lucky to have Taryn Flamson.
Next up, we have, to recognize the 2025 AXA Administrators of the Year, Assistant Soup Shields and Assistant Soup Torres. Or Kurtzer, that works.
Good evening. It is my distinct honor to introduce a remarkable leader in our district who has been recognized for her extraordinary contributions to student achievement and school leadership. If I could please ask Dr. Lori Hernandez to please come up. My fault. Lori Hogard, Lori Hernandez, I get it mixed up all the time. My fault. We are thrilled to share that Dr. Lori Hogard, principal of Ray Elementary, has been named the Association of California School Administrators Region 17 Elementary Principal of the Year for 2025. Lori was nominated by an NMUSD team for her outstanding leadership and unwavering dedication to student success. Under her guidance, Ray Elementary has become a model for excellence. She is-- She is a passionate advocate for student voice, fostering inclusive advisory councils and collaborative decision-making structures that empower students to make an active, to take an active role in shaping their learning environment. Her leadership is deeply rooted in strategic implementation, evident in the impressive 17% increase in students meeting or exceeding standards on statewide assessments, and a 12% rise in early literacy scores. These outcomes are a direct reflection of her ability to inspire, lead, and deliver meaningful instructional improvements. Lori leads with heart and high expectations, modeling what it means to believe that every student can thrive and achieve excellence. She exemplifies the best of educational leadership in action. Over the numerous roles that Lori has had in this district, principal at Sonora, director of preschools, an incredible legacy at Kelly Brook Elementary School, extraordinary work at the district office, and also the work that she has started at Ray is second to none. It's beyond impressive, so please join me in congratulating Dr. Lori Hogard for AXA's Region 17 Elementary Principal of the Year.
It is my pleasure to introduce Lisa Snowden. Where are you? I know I saw you. I am so pleased to have Lisa Snowden as a member of our secondary team. And it is with great pleasure this evening that we'd like to congratulate, congratulate. Gosh, none of us can speak tonight. I'm not sure what's happening. Congratulate Lisa Snowden for her recognition as the AXA CTE Administrator of the Year. This is an incredible honor to recognize her for her unwavering commitment and tireless advocacy and hands-on leadership in strengthening career and technical education across our district. There have been so many times in our career where we have been able to stand here and shine because of the work that the Career and Technical Education Department has done under Lisa's leadership. She joined our team in 2019 as the CTE Coordinator and come to us from ROP. So you could see where her passion lies. We stole her from the Regional Occupations Programs. And prior to that, she had a job outside education, lo and behold. And so she came to us with her business expertise, her love to support learning in the ROP sector, and then now with career and technical education. During her tenure here, our CTE pathway enrollment has increased by over 500 students, and multiple new CTE pathways have been created, as well as additional opportunities for all of our students in the CTE and industry sectors. Prior to working here, she was a teacher before, and she has taken that to next level by supporting our students. She's used all of her experience to really support all of the students in our district. She's added internships. She's now supporting elementary in their CTE journey with the World of Work. She collaborates with ROP. She's expanded it to all of our secondary schools, elementary. I mean, it just keeps going. And so we're just so proud of that. She is a strong advocate for the career and technical education space and works relentlessly to expand these opportunities, secure resources, and elevate the incredible work happening in the classrooms and supporting the teachers and students who compete at all different kinds of levels, from culinary to robotics to our most recent win with construction tech. I mean, you just name it. Her leadership ensures that our highly engaging, industry-aligned CTE programs continue to grow, thrive, and transform students' futures. Congratulations.
All right. Now let's recognize.
Student. Recognize the winner athlete. Our wrestler.
Dr. Shaka.
Thank you all so much. I'm not the wrestler. And with all the recognitions, is Coach Rogers here? And is Damian Pyramaut here? I know we had people in there, and then they weren't sure if they were going to be able to make it, but is Coach Rogers here? And Damian, are you here? I see some people maybe coming in. Well, Damian is not able to make it right now, but I do want to just say a couple quick words. So President Wagon, members of the board, Dr. Smith, executive cabinet, guests. We're in awards and recognition season, as we can tell by tonight, and we have amazing students being recognized across the district for things like academics, citizenship, effort and improvement, and athletics. And right now, we just want to give a quick recognition to Damian. Damian is a CIF, Southern CIF Champion in Wrestling in the 144 weight class. I hear it was quite an epic final round. And so we look forward to hearing a little more details, but we do want to make sure that we recognize Damian for this incredible accomplishment. Thank you.
That's fantastic. All right, now we're moving on to student board member reports. Trustee Ersoilu.
Okay, the student board members. Last month, we asked them about the three things that they're most proud of at their school site. And what they'd brag about. And this month, we've asked them to think about three things. It could be the programs, the culture, or anything from other high schools in the district that they might be a little jelly of. They might want more of at their site. So the first up, we have Devonny Buski.
I feel like I haven't been here in a really long time, so I'm pretty excited. Well, hello, Superintendent Smith, President Wagon, Vice President Ersoilu, and other team members. I would first off like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you and advocate for my school and student body at the district level. The friendships I've made and the leadership I've gained from this row are truly unforgettable, and I will carry with me through my professional career. Now on to the three things after stalking them on Instagram. For the first one, I put at Newport Harbor, they have a club called Latinos Unidos. And since we have such a large demographic of Latino students at Essancia, I'm kind of surprised that we don't have a club of our own that's kind of the same. So I believe that if we were to have a club like that, it would be beneficial and inclusive for a lot of the students at my school. For number two, even though Costa Mesa High School is our rival, I do admire their participation in Spirit Days and how frequent they do them. I think culture like that should be carried on to Essancia, and it is something I would talk to ASB president about, and good thing I'm really good friends with her. Number three, an event at Corona Del Mar, CDM, that I saw was their spring market and how it supports small businesses. I know a lot of students in Essancia have small businesses, from vending food to even doing nails. So I believe implementing something like a small market for the people of Essancia and hopefully some people like throughout the community of Costa Mesa would create a lot of unification throughout our community. So, thank you.
That was some next level cyber stalking. I appreciate it. Good job. The next up, we have Brianna from Newport Harbor.
Hi, good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Wagon, and esteemed board members. I was actually really excited, sorry. I was really excited for this topic because usually I feel like I come up here and talk about my school lots, so it was interesting to like talk about others. And like Devonny, I did have to do a little bit of stalking Instagrams. And to begin, I think that, so I'm gonna, so yeah, to begin, I think one of the coolest events that CDM hosts is its car show. Not only do they showcase all kinds of cars, like new, old, or sporty, they also have had vendors there such as Moon Goat Coffee. And this unique event is definitely something that I think students would have fun at, and it's a great way for students to connect over similar interests. And looking at other schools like Essancia, they host their own Morp Dance, which is prom backwards. And it's more of like a laid-back and fun dance for the students at Harbor. We don't have something like this, and I think it'd be fun as it's more casual than regular prom. And is another dance for students to look forward to at the end of the year. And lastly, I think a lot of the other high schools, just in general in our district, do a better job at having fun and engaging lunchtime activities for their students, such as Costa Mesa's Cuties for Cuties event, where students got key cutie oranges and took photos in a frame for Mindful March Month. All in all, I think that each high school in our district holds such amazing events and creates great culture and school spirit at their own campuses. And as the school year is coming to the end, we can all look back, and I think we can agree that there's been nothing but fun moments to reflect on, and I hope that all campuses will finish the year strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are great, great events that are going on at our different schools. Now, our Harbor Council PTA report, Martha Flor.
I love this time of year. Six days, six days till Memorial Day, and 13 days till school's out and parents and families get their kids back 24/7. Good evening, President Wagon, Vice President Ersoilu, and Clerk Murphy aboard, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and community members. My name is Martha Flor, and I'm the President of the Harbor Council PTA. Last week, Harbor Council held our Honorary Service Awards. We had an overwhelming response from our units, and over 125 honorees were in attendance. Thank you, Dr. Smith, Trustee Anderson, and Murphy for attending. The meeting has always been a highlight for our schools and our students and our staffs. And so this meeting, we want to congratulate everyone here. I especially want to take, because I've looked back at all that got, and I hired a lot of those people as a board member, but especially Kelly Davis, who is the Back Bay Administrative Assistant. She not only is deserving of this award, but she's retiring. And thankfully, she's retiring because now she's going to be the Back Bay PTA Treasurer. We had our final association meeting yesterday, and we ended the year strong with over 5,500 members. Our 27 units contributed over 198,000 volunteer hours this year. And if you use the California minimum wage of $1,650,000, that equates to $3,267,000 worth of work. All our units are functioning and are wrapping up this year. Yesterday, at our meeting, we recognized two individuals who are retiring, or like we like to say, graduating. So on behalf of our units, we expressed our deep gratitude to Leona Olson, Assistant Superintendent of HR. A few words about Leona. I was on the board when we hired her, and she has touched the lives of over 4,000 employees. That's how many employees we have. The only individual that she's not involved in the hiring and the evaluating is the superintendent. So every other employee owes a debt of gratitude to her. She's been this chief negotiator for nine years, and she's served our district for 10 years. So I think every single person on Cabinet except for Jeff Trader and Sarah Jockum, she was involved in hiring. So that's pretty impressive. Then we also would like to thank our Chief Business Official, Jeffrey Trader, and Assistant Superintendent. Jeff is our own Warren Buffett. He has built or contributed to four theaters, state-of-the-art theaters, four stadiums, two bond measures, and has managed a district budget over $500 million, and has kept us with a AAA bond rating. He has three pools behind him, air conditioning, fencing, and both of these individuals have strong moral and ethical characteristics beyond just being great people. And we're very excited because both of them have volunteered to be on the PTA next year. So we're going to be finding them another jobs. Anyway, we're going to wish both of you, we're going to miss you so much, and you're going to be very hard to replace. These are exciting times for our students and our staff and our faculty. And every year at this time when I was on the board, I always said this. Please, students, be smart and stay safe. Don't make stupid mistakes. Your life depends upon it. See you next year, Dr. Smith and the board. We are very excited to hear about all the plans that you have for the school district next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, CSCA President Amy Ching.
Good evening, President Wagon, trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and guests. I want to congratulate everyone tonight on their achievements, teachers, administrators, athletes, and especially the classified staff, Yasenia Rosales and Kelly Davis. Your dedication to students and your hard work shines bright for this district. This is classified, as you know, this is Classified School Employee Week, and our chapter is celebrating with our third annual member celebration at Acapulco Restaurant. We will have food, fun, and prizes for those attending. Earlier this month, we awarded scholarships for classified members. This year, we expanded our scholarship recipients to include active members as well as their dependents. Scholarships were awarded to Nathaniel Hermoto, dependent, Brandon Kraft, dependent, Erica Lee, member, and Dorian Graham, member. We wish them the best in achieving their educational goals. I've been reflecting this week on how I would represent classified employees, since it's Classified School Employee Week, and what does it mean to be a classified employee. It means knowing that the work you do as a custodian provides a clean environment for students to learn. It means knowing that your smile during breakfast service may light, that may be the light that the student needs to start their day. It means knowing that the grass you trim and the plants you water create a clean, beautiful campus. It means getting the software working smoothly so that vendor payments can be processed and students can have the resources they need to thrive. It means that you are part of the whole, part of the group that supports every child in this district. Thursday, we celebrate ACE Day, where some of you, along with Cabinet and administrators, get to see, get to see hands-on the work of classified employees. This is always a fun day and highlights the work that we do. I didn't have anything written specifically for Leona and Jeff. I work in my capacity with CSCA President closely with Leona, and I am a budget, I work in the Budgets Department, which is under Jeff. So I don't really have anything to say or prepare because I'll probably cry, so I'm going to stop. Anyways, I just want to thank them both. But we look forward to continuing to do the good work for students, staff, and the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, NMFT President Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, President Wagon, trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and guests here tonight. So I know we presented the District Teacher of the Year, but as we revealed at the Teacher of the Year Celebration, we had a bit of a history with one school having three years of back-to-back District Teacher of the Year. That's Anson Intermediate, and Sam Payne have those bragging rights. So speaking of bragging rights, as we all know how fortunate this district is to have Jeff Trader with his extraordinary finance and humor skills, because those don't usually go together, but he's the total package. Keeping our district solvent, we are probably the only district that offered a retirement incentive, incentive, yet... yet every position, as was told to me, that is retiring will also be replaced. So the incentive was not used as workforce reduction. So this is quite the bragging rights that I have repeated at our county and state labor meetings. So thank you for that.
All right. Next up, Community Input on Non-Agendized Item, Trustee Murphy.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Okay, great. First up, we have Aviki Snell.
We didn't know we were all going to be here tonight. I'm Aviki Snell. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the Estancia High School Theater Building be named in honor of Barbara Van Holt, the visionary founder of the school's award-winning drama program, and that the main stage be named after Pauline Marinian, who has carried that vision forward with distinction and passion for three decades. As you've heard, or will hear this evening, there are countless reasons why these two extraordinary women deserve this honor. It is my privilege to share with you the remarkable journey of Pauline, a dedicated educator and passionate artist and inspiring mentor whose impact on students and the Estancia community cannot be overstated. Pauline's journey began when she graduated from UC Santa Barbara in 1990 with a Bachelor of Fine Arts. She then continued her studies at the prestigious American Conservatory Theater in San Francisco, earning a Master's of Fine Arts in Acting in 1992. Her teaching career began at the Creative Expression Arts Program in Pasadena, where she taught the fundamentals of acting. From there, Pauline moved on to teach at the Academy of Performing Arts at Huntington Beach High School and Ocean View High School. But it was in 1995 when she was recruited by Barbara Van Holt upon her retirement that Pauline found what many of us consider the pinnacle of her career. In 1996, Pauline took over the drama program at Estancia High School and has been inspiring students there ever since. In a letter of recommendation written for Pauline's Teacher of the Year Award in 2003, Barbara wrote, "Her directing experience is evident from her resume, but her skill needs to be seen to be believed. Pauline is extremely bright, capable, and talented." Barbara went on to say, "Pauline is an expert in the hardest part of the job, treating each student as an individual. She understands that providing a safe environment in which kids can create is only half the battle. The rest is knowing what will unlock that kernel in each child. What kind of nurturing will help it grow best? Her students rarely leave her mind." Throughout her time at Estancia, Pauline has received numerous awards and honors, but her true legacy is far deeper than any trophy or plaque. She has changed lives by creating a space where students feel safe to be themselves, to explore, to laugh, to learn, and to grow. Their names on the theater reminds the community that Barbara Van Holt and Pauline Marinian are shining examples of what it means to be a teacher, an artist, and a guide. Their stories are not just about career. It's about a life of purpose, passion, and impact. I was almost done.
Thank you. Next up, we have Holly Van Holt.
Good evening, everyone. As you might have noticed, my last name, I am related to Barbara Van Holt. She's my mother. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit more heartfelt stuff from me as I know it. You know, it's an honor that everybody's even considering this theater for her. She was originally the first drama instructor at Coronel Omar High School when it opened in 1962, and then was recruited over to Estancia the year after I was born, 1966. So, and then was there until 1999 when she retired. She, you know, just, I turned in the application with the letters, and that's just a small portion of the letters I could have gotten. If I had another month or two, I easily could have gotten another 30, 40, 50 letters in regards to her impact on her students' lives. She, you know, she dedicated everything she had to her kids, everything. I saw it, because I was her daughter, so I saw it, her whole life. And it literally fed her soul to see them succeed. Whether arts or not, she, it just fed her soul for that to happen. And that was, that was her legacy. And she felt that, you know, drama itself, it boosted their self-confidence. It enhanced their communication and critical thinking skills. It fostered creativity and empathy. And last but not least, it improved their academic performance. And what she found to be, she would get them as drama students as freshmen, and surprise, surprise, two years later, they would be in her AP Junior English class, which says a lot about what she was doing with them in drama to lead them to those places. Well, I could tell you hours of stories. I won't go there. I'll just finish with a quote from Maya Angelou, that sums up my mom. "Your legacy is every life you have touched." And she touched a lot of lives, and it would be an honor for you to name the theater after her. Thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Laura Morrow Quinn.
I just wanted to say something briefly. Mrs. Van Holt was the only teacher that I ever gave a present to as a high school teacher. So that impact is real. Thank you.
Well, good evening, elected board members, Superintendent Smith, and staff. My name is Laura Ursini Morrow Quinn, and I am here today to share with you in the excitement of the near completion of the Estancia High School Performing Arts Center. It is a gorgeous building, and our entire zone is going to flourish in it for years to come. As we near its completion, it is time for the board to officially name the theater. And I would like to ask you to consider naming the building the Barbara Van Holt Performing Arts Center and name the 350th main stage after Pauline Marinian. These two individuals, as you have heard, Barbara Van Holt and Pauline Marinian, have created a legacy of excellence, tradition, and security at Estancia High School. They are both worthy of such an honor. I was a student of Barbara Van Holt's. She was the first teacher at Estancia to teach drama, and she was the program creator who instilled traditions and dedication of excellence that is known in Estancia drama. Under her guidance, students discover their innate individual strengths. For example, I learned that as an individual, I was a much better business manager than actress. Now, two of my children, Justin Morrow Quinn and Amber Reyes, were blessed to have Pauline Marinian as their teacher. Pauline not only devoted her life to her drama students for over 26 years, she made my children and thousands of others feel seen and valued and supported. She teaches her students to pursue excellence in whatever craft they choose, to honor all individuals, and to value themselves. I speak for many parents in saying that I am very grateful that Pauline Marinian helped shape my children into the children they are today. Both Barbara Van Holt and Pauline Marinian have made our community, our nation, and honestly, our world, a better place thanks to the love of their, their love of teaching theater. So I ask you to honor them by giving their naming rights to Estancia's new theater. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Kathy Adamiak. Sorry, I'm going to butcher your last name. Adamiak.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kathy Adamiak, and I am one of your school nurses. I wanted to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation for your ongoing support of school nurses in our district. At a time when many districts have chosen to eliminate or replace credentialed school nurses with unlicensed personnel, you have chosen a different path, one that protects students and prioritizes their health. I've worked as a school nurse for 28 years here, and over that time, I've seen a clear and undeniable trend. More and more children are coming to school with serious, complex, and sometimes life-threatening health conditions. From diabetes and seizures disorders to asthma, severe allergies, blood disorders, cancer, and mental health crisis, the level of care these students need has grown dramatically. The credentialed school nurse is uniquely trained to manage these medical complexities, respond in emergencies, and coordinate care across families, physicians, and school staff. This isn't something you can delegate to someone without the appropriate training and licensure. By continuing to invest in licensed, credentialed school nurses, you are protecting the lives and futures of students who may not be able to succeed without your support. Your decision sends a clear message that our district values the whole child, not just their test scores. On behalf of all of us who serve in school health offices and the thousands of students and families we care for, I thank you truly for your leadership and commitment to doing the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Laura Garcia Chandler. Is Laura Garcia Chandler here? All right, seeing none. If there's anyone coming in from outside. One more time, Laura Garcia Chandler. All right, we're going to move on then. If she comes up, we can always bring her back.
Trustee Wigan, what was, what's the topic?
Same thing, school nurse.
Nurse?
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have Emily Norton.
Hello, I'm Emily Norton, and I am a proud parent of two NMUSD students. And it has been something I've been, oh, I'm nervous. Okay. I've had two NMUSD students in the district for the past 15 years, and I've seen firsthand the dedication, professionalism, and the going the extra mile of many of the professionals that, that join us here. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a vital program, Social Seekings, and respectfully request dedicated funding for it in the '25, '26 school year and beyond. I'm honored to be joined by many parents and even our program director here in support of this request. Social Seekings was born from a simple need to provide social opportunities for my son and students like him with special needs. While our district excels at extracurriculars for typical students, there is a clear void for students like Blake and those like him. They too desire companionship, friendship, and independence. Social Seekings is a transformative after-school program for all middle and high school students with disabilities, and indeed, any student that would like to join us in our district. It offers thoughtfully curated activities that build independent living skills, work readiness, and foster connections. Where students once faced isolation, they now thrive in a supportive environment, engaging with peers, and even cheering on our athletic teams with support. In an era that champions inclusion, Social Seekings is a tangible solution. To date, it's been sustained through private funding and generous donations. The cost is not substantial. Upon reviewing the NMFT collective bargaining agreement, it's clear that while many extracurricular roles are funded by our, for our general student population, there's an oversight regarding dedicated funding for activities specifically designed for our special education students. My earnest request is that you rectify this by allocating the necessary funds to staff and sustain Social Seekings and other programs throughout the district at other sites. As your own document states, all our students are all our students. It is my sincere hope that bringing this pressing need to your attention will result in the allocation of resources for the upcoming school year, ensuring that Social Seekings can continue fostering connection, growth, and belonging for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Winberry.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to be speaking here tonight. My name is Melissa Winberry, and I have a daughter who attends Newport Harbor. And my son, Asher, has been a part of the special education program here since he was in preschool and is currently at CDM. I have been an active participant in this community and have served on the Community Advisory Committee since he was five. My daughter also founded a program called Connect Dance, offering free dance classes to students with special needs in our district. Through this, I stay connected to many families navigating similar challenges, which gives me the opportunity to be part of the solution. The older our children get, the harder it becomes to find spaces where they belong. The gap between general education students and students with disabilities widens, not because of ability, but because of lack of inclusive opportunities. Right now, my son doesn't have, doesn't want to go to school because there's no real place for him. He's losing interest in the buy-in, not because he lacks ability, but because he lacks access. He's losing, let's say, sorry, this is, this is what inclusion really means. Not a policy, but whether our kids feel like, whether our kids feel like they're part of the school community. At the very front of our collective bargaining agreement, it says, "All students are all our students, seen, heard, and supported." But right now, for many families like mine, it feels like more of a goal than a reality. Inclusion isn't just a special education issue, it's a district-wide value. But for this to be true, we need to see it reflected in real opportunities and real support. When we look at the collective bargaining agreement, we see over 100 line items for student-driven programs, athletics, drama, and yearbook. These opportunities are so valuable, but it's difficult to argue what the current offerings are, that the current offerings are equitable when students who present differently, like my son, are not providing the same access and support to participate. And it feels like a key voice is missing at the table, ours. Families of students with disabilities are not asking to take away from existing programs. We're asking, how can we broaden the pie to be more inclusive? We're simply asking to be considered. Because though you may choose not to fund these programs, we know you can fund them. Students like my son, who fall in the mild to moderate category, have the ability to participate no-cut sports like cross-country, track, field, and swim, but they need a little more support to succeed, which would simply require thoughtful planning and dedicated staffing. But there's no one at the school sites tasked with helping these students navigate how to be included. For families, it feels like a maze of meetings and hurdles that lead nowhere. For example, my son wanted to be part of ASB. He wanted to help with the basketball team, not even necessarily as a player, but as a participant in some way. He is capable, but there is no pathway for students like him. No one is asking, how can we include these students? I'm here tonight to ask you to fund the pathway for inclusion and create this opportunity for my son and students like him. Other districts are already doing this. After visiting Tribuco Hills, there is a strong example with successful United Sports and Co. Talk electives designed for all students.
Thank you. If you have more to say, you could send it in an email to the board.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
We have Marion Rochang. Sorry, I'm bad with names. Miriam.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Rochanga, and I come to you with gratitude this evening as a CDM parent and a child with an IEP. I'd like to address two essential issues this evening. Extracurricular activities and communication. Extracurriculars, whether it's sports, drama, robotics, or student council are such an important part of the school experience. This is where students build friendships, confidence, leadership skills, and a true sense of belonging. Access is more than just being allowed to sign up or try out. It means inclusive planning to provide the supports that students need to participate fully. When all students are represented in extracurricular activities, the whole community benefits. Empathy is a skill that can be developed, matured, and strengthened through experience, social interactions, learning, and practice. When we are empathetic, we're better able to build trust and rapport and connect with people. And why not foster this skill in our school for all students? CDM is meant to be the model of an inclusive education experience for all schools in Newport Mesa. To that point, CDM extracurricular activities should be and can be accessible and inclusive to all students. Currently, they are not. Inclusion may pose unique challenges, but the benefits of inclusion outweigh. Inclusion may pose unique challenges, but the benefits of inclusion outweigh these potential obstacles. Further, families of students with special needs often find themselves navigating unclear processes or receiving information only after problems arise. That must change. Our community requires a staff member with boots on the ground, working onsite at the school, who's proactively responsible for facilitating conversations regarding our students' needs. Special needs students are underrepresented in their schools in many ways. From day one, that school orientation and registration that are meant to assist with this nerve-wracking transition from elementary school to middle school completely ignore our community. These meetings discuss social clubs and programs for those students who excel academically. However, there's no mention of students on IEPs. Much like the interpreters and accommodations that were quickly put in place to ensuring that our new Russian-speaking families are integrated into our community and have a voice, special needs students should be afforded the same consideration. Further, students in our community require special representation when dealing with disciplinary issues. A special needs liaison would be well acquainted with students' IEP and needs to best address disciplinary instances as they rise and facilitate communication with all relevant parties. I urge this board to prioritize three actions. One, please reevaluate current extracurricular programs for accessibility. Two, establish consistent family-centered communication practices. And three, hire a dedicated staff member who will work onsite at the school to facilitate communication with our families, and hold meetings for our students to address the transition to middle school, represent our students' disciplinary concerns, and help make extracurriculars accessible for special needs students. When we invest in inclusion and communication, everyone benefits. Our schools become more welcoming, our students more connected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Anna Laboon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna Laboon, and I'm a proud product of the Newport Mesa Unified School District. It's a full-circle moment to be here today, not only as an alumni of the district, but as a mother of two incredible children with special needs, and as an educational consultant and special education teacher who has dedicated the last 25 years of my life for children to help them thrive. My story is deeply personal. My oldest son, who has attended Newport Mesa, is thriving and doing so well because of the district. My middle son is still recovering from encephalitis and has also been supported through the district. Boy, it's been a journey. Through these experiences, I've had the opportunity to walk side by side with dedicated teachers and staff who generally care and who, like many parents, want the best for every child but sometimes need more support to get there. In addition to being a parent, I was once a student in special education right here in Newport Mesa. I'm a product of success. I say that so proudly. These layers of experience as a student, a mother, and an educator has shaped how I support children with special needs, both in and out of the classroom. For the past 10 years, I've owned Activate Learning Center right here in Newport Beach, where we work closely with students impacted by IEP's 504 plans. In that time, I have regularly attended IEP meetings across the district as an advocate for families. And one consistent theme that I see is a lack of collaboration and time to truly get everyone on the same page for the students. Students are being mainstreamed into general education electives in environments where teachers aren't always given a full picture of the student's profile and therefore cannot adequately differentiate instruction. This creates frustration on every end for students, teachers, and families. What's more, aides often aren't trained enough or informed on how to assist the students they support. There isn't enough orientation information sharing or professional development to make inclusion meaningful. And as an advocate, this is deeply challenging. The intentions are there, the heart is in the right place, but there is a clear gap in execution and support. I bring this up because I see it firsthand in classroom observations, in IEP meetings, and in follow-up with families. There is a desire to do well, but what's missing is a direct line of coordination, someone who connects all the moving parts, ensures that when we talk about inclusion, we're not just placing students into programs, but actually preparing everyone involved to understand, support, and empower those students. That's why I believe a liaison role is not just beneficial, it's essential. This person would work with general education and special education teachers, with aides, administrators, and families to help guide and support the future unified inclusion model, especially in electus and physical education. Most importantly, the liaison will have the heart and experience and dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Leila Cesaro.
Good evening, board members, and committed school district educators and administrators. My name is Leila Cesario. I'm a mom of two kids, one with autism attending CDM, and one at a local private school who we intend to bring back into the district for high school. My husband is a product of Newport Mesa, and I think he turned out pretty great. I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak freely this evening. I am beyond appreciative of the partnership that my family and I, along with our advocate, have developed with the school administrators in ensuring that my son has access to the curriculum that he wants and deserves. Collectively, we moms speaking this evening represents students with a range of needs. However, the common thread is access. While access can easily be understood when we speak of physical activity, it gets more complicated when we start to talk about curriculum. We need to frame this curriculum discussion, starting with a science truth. Communication input happens in one part of the brain, while the output comes from a separate and different part of the brain. That means that although a child could have a challenge expressing or communicating what information has come in, that does not mean that they are not processing or properly taking in that information. This disconnect that we have is a bias in not providing access to rigorous curriculum. A reference I often cite is the ULS curriculum on jobs. Spending classroom time, having students, junior high students, learn what J-Lo's first job was, what Oprah's first job, Barack Obama's first job. Did you know he worked in an ice cream shop in Honolulu? I didn't, and it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. We should not be spending classroom time on this. I struggle to find value and time spent on that, among many other examples out of the ULS. I'm here today asking us, as a community, to push harder in the area of curriculum access. While I understand that a lot of effort has been made in ensuring that standards are met, the spirit of access from a parent perspective is lost. Students with extensive needs are assumed to not have the need for foundational curriculum, while students with lesser needs are thrown in without structural support ensuring that curriculum is being broken down and differentiated. We are asking to emphasize and put more resources against hands-on, continuous training and supporting all teachers to better install differentiation strategies within the classroom. We need a liaison, boots on the ground, that are making sure kids like mine get access to rigorous curriculum, someone on campus to be their curriculum advocate, skilled in supporting teachers, an advocate that is brought in that believes every student is a general ed student first. We have case carriers, but there are also teachers with heavy workloads and can't take on an advocacy role.
Thank you. If you want to send us an email with everything else you want to say, you can. Thank you. Next, we have Gada Afifi.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, Dr. Smith, President Wagon, and the board members. I'm really honored to be here. My mom is a retired librarian. I have three cousins who are schoolteachers. My aunt is a superintendent, so I'm extremely respectful to be here. I sent a picture of this to my mother, so I'm like, "Oh, my God." So this is a bit difficult for me. This is, you know, I think surgery's a little bit easier to come here on behalf of your child because it's just incredibly personal. I'm here not only as a parent, but as an advocate for neurodiverse children, such as my son Zane, who's 13 years old and high-functioning autistic. We started in Newport Coast, where we got reports that, "Hey, your son is peeing in the playground," to improving by being included in special ed. And we progressed to middle school, where he tried for the school play, got rejected, tried for ASB, got rejected, tried for swimming, got rejected, a series of rejections, which is very difficult to take as a parent who loves her kid. So Zane, like many children on the autistic spectrum, struggles with social connection, unstructured time. I would get emails like, "Hey, your son is eating lunch by himself." And then, as a parent, it's very hard to get an email like that from a teacher, a well-intended teacher, because I'm like, "I don't know what you want me to do. I mean, I wish I could be there and teach him how to socialize with kids, but I can't." So that's difficult. And other parents I hear voice the same need. In either case, I think having a special education social club, which has been existing the last two years, and having funding for it would be significantly important. It promotes inclusion, as stated above, provides social, emotional skills in a supportive environment, reduces isolation and anxiety. Zane goes all the time. He would tell me if he didn't. The club would not need a big budget. It would be dedicated staff, one or two members with special education training, some sensory-friendly materials, structural activities like tech projects, creative arts, social games, et cetera. But the bottom line is, my son is a very direct person. If he does not like something, he will simply say no. I ask him, "Hey, do you want to come home early and hang out?" "No, I want to go to a social club." So he's saying no to VR and YouTube and wants to go to social club. I think everybody in the room with this over, you know, tech, lack of socialization can understand it, whether they have an autistic child or not. I'm done.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of public comment. Now, we have superintendent's comments.
Yeah, part of what I get to do is clarify, not for people in the room necessarily who know, so that's especially true tonight. I'll be making some comments for those who might be watching. With regard to the Estancia Theater, just so everyone in the community is clear, there is a process, a board policy that defines how you name facilities, and the group here tonight knows that because they've submitted one, and it's a great proposal. And that committee meets tomorrow, in fact, at 1:00 to begin that consideration. I share that with people who'll say, "Hey, let's all show up at the board meeting and talk about naming something else." You're welcome to. Just make sure you put that packet in first because there's an actual form that you fill out. We're excited about the Estancia Theater and its completion. It's ironic that Vicky Snell was one of the first people to speak tonight because I think I first met her at an Estancia Theater meeting, where she was not very happy, and I got to deal with her being not very happy in my second week or so on the job. It wasn't very long. But what it really expressed was the importance of this resource in our district, in a part of our community that can truly use it. So we're excited. We're going to ribbon-cut that on time, and that's exciting. But to be clear for those folks watching, the process is being followed, the committee is meeting, and then the board will entertain it once the committee gives them a recommendation, and that shouldn't be too far out. With regard to nursing and staffing and the importance of that, absolutely, and I think that's demonstrated by this district's commitment to nurses, to health clerks, although they identify there's a difference in job description, the ability to do the work, and certainly technically, that's true. This district has invested in that, and they've demonstrated in deed and word that it's important to them, the overall being of students. I've never worked in a district with this many of those folks. For districts our size, in fact, you just don't see this type of staffing in that regard. And so I know this is a board that agrees with the comments that were made. With regard to the others, and there's so much to just kind of hit on, it's interesting because this is a group that I met right away, and I met Melissa early on, and what would tell her off the record, although I'm on the record. Don't be so nervous, you're a great speaker, and you're passionate about what you have to say. You have something important to say, say it. But absolutely, and what I want folks to know is that when parents come forward, when advocates come forward, we really, really listen. And while we're nowhere near where we need to be, I believe, and I believe there's quite a bit of evidence to say we're headed in the right direction because we're listening. I look at, since I've been here, and it has nothing to do with me, it has to do with folks like those who stood at the podium today and made comments, and then staff. Some of them seated before you, others back in the room, others at home, listening. But since I've been here, we have a co-teaching model that we've started to really grow out and do PD at CDM, in fact, because we know that there's a benefit in that. And again, not to say that we're there, just to say that thank you for bringing that up. Unified Sports launches soon. We have a softball game between CDM and Estancia. I will absolutely be there, can't wait. And again, one athletic event doesn't an inclusive program define? Absolutely. I'm just saying, thank you for bringing it up. It's something I had never heard of before. I'm sure the experts in the room have heard about it. But I appreciate that, and I appreciate that the staff is leaning into that. We want to grow that program. This is just the beginning. The period seven and eight at all four of our comprehensives, that we, you know, invest in that because we know it's important, and that came from parents that said, "Hey, we really like to see this," and we were able to pull that off. We talk about liaison. We in fact have implemented this year a TOSA at our sites, and one is housed at CDM. They serve other schools, of course, because, you know, they want to be able to be accessible to teachers throughout the district or in that area to help them create more inclusive environments. And again, that's new. We're going to keep growing that and growing the impact of that, but certainly see some progress. Maybe not as much as parents would like to see, maybe not as quickly, but we agree that we need to do the work, and I'm happy about their participation in these great ideas. I do want to say too, just for clarification for people who are watching, for those folks that hear parents and others talking about inclusion, just to be clear, we're not talking about some political rhetoric, right? We're not talking about something that would get the district in trouble or parents in trouble. This is not the I-N-D-E-I, whatever folks maybe think. We're talking about what is a principle in public education that is a law in California where we must teach students in the least restrictive environment. Also, the research says that heterogeneous environment is best for all students, right? So research-based, it's the law in California. But it's also this mindset here that we're really trying to lean into, which is that every student feels seen, heard, supported, and safe, right? That every student feels like they belong, and they're connected in meaningful ways to the classroom, to the school, et cetera. And so all these things being said are the things that we're focused on. In fact, we started this year with that being our executive cabinet's number-one priority, period, right? And so we brought in the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence to work on, where can we get better? Our parents have been working with this, we have state experts, where do we get better? And they've helped us. So here's what's exciting. Those of you that care about this topic, and I'm sure all of you do, we'll be doing a board presentation in the next several board meetings where we share what we learned from CCEE, the steps that we intend to strategically engage over the next several years, and the outcomes that we expect to see. One of the things that we're talking about, and I was very glad to hear the parents say that, is, look, we know that these least restrictive, inclusive environments are the best way to educate our children. We also know there are teachers, and someone mentioned, "All students are Jan Ed students." Thank you, right? And that the Jan Ed teachers want to provide these services. We have the obligation of making sure they feel well-equipped to do so. And so the professional development is something that you'll hear us talking about during that special education presentation. It's something we started this year about PD inclusion around, PD around inclusion, rather, but we need to grow that. And so we're starting, we're going to get better, we're going to do more and more of that. And then, just so you know, we have a parent meeting tomorrow at 1:00 district-wide. We invite any parents that have these concerns and others, please come to the meeting. There is evidence that I've shared tonight to support that we are listening, that we do care. And if you're telling us, "Yeah, we'll care faster," we'll try. We'll try. We certainly want to make sure that every student, all 18,000, feel like they belong and that they're connected to school. So that's for sure.
Thank you. Next, we have a report. Sorry, we have one more on an agendized topic to speak. So we have Jose De La Hara. Clerk Murphy has to... Oh, yes.
No, I think we're okay. Do we? Okay. Do you want to say your spiel? Say your spiel.
Sorry.
Uh, this is the opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board if the speaker prefers.
All right. Now we have Jose De La Hara.
See if I can read it. Good evening. My name is Jose De La Hara. I know a lot of you. I am a product of Newport Mesa. I earned my PhD from Newport Mesa, which is public high school diploma. So.
We're doing good.
So I am here. I was called today, uh, kind of last minute, and I was to talk about item 19A11, which is the CDM scoreboard that they're putting in, which I'm fully supportive of. But I wanted to talk to you, and I sent you guys an email about Estancia. Estancia is an amazing facility, but they, when they built that facility, they put what was the standard, which is a line board. And now we're, uh, CDM is getting a new full video LED board, and Newport Harbor is getting a full LED board. And Costa Mesa's had one since 2010, since their facility there. I'm asking the, the board to please don't forget the, the West Side. Don't forget the kids. Um, I do a lot of things within the community, and I bring a lot of people into that, into the school, and I, I, and I just want everybody to feel that the kids on the West Side still get the same things that we all get. So I really appreciate it. And one last thing, and, uh, you know, also if we, if we do this, please also move it to the, move the board to the shallow end of the pool because, uh, when there's competitions happening, uh, the coaches can't see it. Um, they just, they can't see the board because it's on the long side of the, of the facility, of the pool, when it needs to be in the shallow end. That was kind of something happened. So I appreciate your time. Uh, since I still got a minute, 30 seconds, I'm going to give some shout-outs to Jeff Trader. Amazing job all this year, so thank you. I appreciate you. Your job's very hard. I too was in Barbara Van Holt class in 1991 at Estancia, and I was, I played a giraffe one time. So, um, so I do also ask to please name that thing, the, the, that thing, because we've seen it happen. So appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Please don't forget our kids over here in the West Side. Estancia, Clofen, 91. Go Eagles. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the report. Report on the District English Learner Advisory Committee, also known as D-LAC, and multilingual updates. Dr. Shields.
Thank you. As the, um, board is aware, every, um, year we are required that to give time to our D-LAC parents to report on their year. In addition to the requirement, we're just always thrilled to hear their opinions and thoughts and ideas and ways we can serve their children and them in this academic endeavor. And we also asked, uh, Ms. Laura Del Pash to add on some slides about how multilingual is doing since we're all here this evening with eyes on this, um, program. So thank you. Laura, take it from you.
Thank you. I wanted the whole meeting, but I got a few minutes. Okay. So we're going to start with our D-LAC report. President Wigan, Trustee Superintendent Smith, and Cabinet, it's my pleasure to introduce the District English Learner Advisory Committee, or D-LAC, Board Report for 2024-25. Just a few reminders. I know we've been here before, but, uh, mostly for our guests, that the D-LAC, uh, the purpose of D-LAC is to advise the Newport Mesa Unified School District on programs and services for English learners. It is comprised of one to two members from each of the site English Learner Advisory Committees, or ELACs. We have to have lots of acronyms. And every year, we really strive to grow and improve our D-LAC and our ELAC experiences for our parents. I'm really proud of the work we've done, not just to improve attendance. Attendance is important, uh, but also to provide meaningful experiences for our parents, to engage them in district and school communities. So there are nine required topics from Education Code, and so, um, we do try our best to cover those and make those exciting. Uh, but most important, we want to balance those topics at our meetings with, um, topics that are generated by our parents. So we do have a needs assessment in the beginning, and we work with our D-LAC leadership to select those topics. Sometimes they're Newport Mesa staff, sometimes they're outside speakers. Um, we also really try to incorporate topics that, um, our leaders, our D-LAC representatives, can then take back to their sites and work with their ELACs and their principals to perhaps take back. Um, I want to give you just one quick example. Our CTE presentation was so well-received this year. Um, they had a roadshow because the ELACs invited them on many, uh, to many of their campuses. And our Pomona and Ray, um, ELACs even initiated, can you take us on a field trip? So they went on a field trip to Estancia and Newport Harbor to see CTE in action, and that was all from the seed planted in D-LAC. So super exciting. Um, our D-LAC report is prepared by our parents. We take two full meetings with our leadership and our chairpersons to develop our report. Our highlights and recommendations are generated directly by the parent leaders. And you have a copy of the full report. Um, but who you really want to hear from is our wonderful, um, D-LAC co-chairperson, Ms. Carmen Ramirez. So I invite her up. Carmen is going to read a summary of the report, not the full report. You have that copy. And she will be reading in Spanish. And then, just for the purposes of flow, then, um, Jacqueline Gaetan, our school community facilitator, will then share that in English for you.
Buenas tardes. Presidenta Wigan. Estuve practicando su apellido toda la junta. Superintendent Smith and miembros de la Junta de Educación. Mi nombre es Carmen Ramirez, y yo soy la presidenta de D-LAC. Y estas son las áreas destacadas y recomendaciones de nuestro reporte anual. Protocolos de las reuniones. D-LAC recomienda que las reuniones comiencen con un recordatorio para que los padres hagan solo preguntas generales. Las preguntas sobre casos personales de estudiantes deben de tratarse en privado con el personal después de una reunión. La comunicación. Los padres están muy satisfechos con la forma que se les informa sobre las reuniones de D-LAC. Reciben recordatorios por mensaje, de texto, correos electrónicos, cartas y llamadas telefónicas. Las cartas y las llamadas telefónicas son muy especialmente útiles. El miembro del personal que hace las llamadas es amable y suele ayudar con otras preguntas. Ambiente exclusivo para todos los padres, incluyendo a los padres de educación especial. Las reuniones de D-LAC son inclusivas y dan la bienvenida a los padres de estudiantes de educación especial. Una madre asiste regularmente y comenta que se siente muy motivada y que, y que pertenece al grupo. Asistencia de administradores. A los padres les agradece ver a líderes del distrito como Socorro Shield, Kate Carmona, en las reuniones. Su presencia demuestra que valoran a los padres. Además, los servicios de interpretación en diferentes idiomas han mejorado gracias a Javier, Marcela, Rusty, y otros. Evaluación de necesidades de los estudiantes de inglés. Los padres consideraron útiles las discusiones sobre las evaluaciones de las necesidades. D-LAC recomienda que esta encuesta se envíe a todos los padres de los estudiantes de inglés, incluso en escuelas que no requieren ELAC para entender mejor sus necesidades. Visita del superintendente. Los padres valoran enormemente la presencia del superintendente, pero nos gustaría permitir preguntas enviadas previamente y más tiempo para preguntas y respuestas en vivo durante la presentación. También agradeceríamos que el superintendente asistiera a nuestra D-LAC de ser posible dos veces al año para recibir y también para reconocer el labor de los padres. Recursos de inmigración. D-LAC aprecia la inclusión de presentaciones sobre los temas de inmigración, lo cual refleja la conciencia y el apoyo del distrito hacia las realidades personales de muchas familias. Reclasificación. Esta sección ayudó a los padres a entender la importancia de la reclasificación a temprana edad, especialmente en la primaria. Los padres se sintieron motivados a apoyar más a sus hijos académicamente. Panel de stu- de inglés, de estudiantes de inglés. El panel de estudiantes que fueron aprendices de inglés fue muy inspirador. D-LAC recomienda incluir en el futuro a exestudiantes de inglés que ahora trabaja para nuestro, para el distrito como coordinadoras, psicólogos, o maestros. Programas de carrera técnica. A los padres les gustó conocer sobre las clases que preparan a los estudiantes para carreras robótica y construcción, y aprecian recibir esta información con anticipación para planificar el camino académico de sus hijos. Varios padres también aprovecharon oportunidades de educación para adultos. Programas después de escuela y verano. Los padres destacaron la variedad de oportunidades de aprendizaje expandido y enfatizaron la necesidad de información más detallada sobre los programas de verano. Por favor, presente en este tema en primavera cuando haya más información disponible sobre la escuela de verano. Feria de recursos. A los padres les encanta la feria de recursos de D-LAC porque une a las familias y proporciona información esencial. Sugiere invitar agencias fuera del distrito y que las escuelas tengan copias impresas de folletos para compartir con las familias. Opiniones sobre El Cap. Los padres valoran el poder dar su opinión sobre El Cap y la forma en que se recopilan comentarios. Sin embargo, solicitan mayor cantidad sobre el propósito y conficial- confidial- confidencialidad. Ay, entraba lenguas. De la encuesta. Y recomiendan incluso un aviso de privacidad. Política de participación de padres. D-LAC agradece a Vanessa Gaily por reunirse con la mesa directiva y explicar con claridad y amabilidad las formas de, de participación de padres. Ayuda de tecnología. Los padres desean una clase sencilla y práctica con los Chromebooks para aprender a usar las plataformas escolares y páginas del web del distrito. Conferencia de CAVE. Asistir a la conferencia de la Sesión de Educación Bilingüe de California CAVE fue una experiencia enriquecedora. Los padres están agradecidos por el apoyo del distrito y solicitan continuar teniendo estas oportunidades, incluyendo las camisetas para los grupos de padres y apoyo para cubrir gastos como hacen otros distritos. Por favor, permita que nuestros coordinadores de la comunidad e interpretes asistan a CAVE cada año. Clases de parapadres. La clase de Grupo Crecer impartidas por el doctor Bravo tuvieron un impacto positivo al ofrecer herramientas terapéuticas y consejos para la crianza. El curso de disciplina positiva también fue muy recibido por la, por su formato, presencia, y práctico que fomentó una reflexión personal y técnicas positivas de crianza. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, President Wigan, Superintendent Smith, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Jacqueline Gaetan, School Community Facilitator, and I will read Mrs. Carmen D-LAC's annual report. These are the highlights and recommendations. Meeting protocols. D-LAC recommends that meetings begin with a reminder for parents to ask only general questions. Personal students' matters should be addressed privately with the staff after the meeting. Communication. Parents are pleased with how they are informed about D-LAC meetings. They get reminders by text, email, letter, and phone call. These letters and phone calls are the most helpful. The staff member who makes the calls is kind and helps answer other questions. Welcoming to all parents, including special education parents. D-LAC meetings are inclusive. Welcoming to special education parents. One parent regularly attends and reports feeling a strong sense of belonging and motivation from the meetings. Administrators' attendance. Parents are glad to see leaders like Socorro Shields and Kate Carmona at the meetings. It shows they care about parents. Also, interpretation services in different languages have improved thanks to Javier, Marcela, and Rusty. EL Needs Assessment. Parents found the needs assessment discussion helpful. D-LAC recommends distributing the survey to all EL parents to understand their needs better, even in schools that do not require ELACs. Superintendent's Visit. Parents highly value the superintendent's presence. But we would like to allow pre-submitting questions and more time for live Q and A during the presentation. They also will appre- appreciate that the superintendent attends our D-LAC, if possible, twice yearly, to welcome and recognize parents' work. Immigration Resources. D-LAC appreciates the inclusion of speakers on immigration topics, which reflect the district awareness and support of issues affecting families' personal lives. Reclasification. This session helped parents understand the importance of early, early reclassification, especially in elementary school. Parents feel motivated to help their children succeed academically. EL Student Panel. The student panel featuring former EL students was inspirational. D-LAC recommends including former EL students who now work in NMUSD, such as school community facilitators, psychologists, teachers. Career Programed CTE. Parents enjoy learning about career prep classes, such as robotics and construction. They appreciate early information that helps plan academic pathways for their children. Many also benefit from adult education opportunities. After-School and Summer Programs. Parents note a variety of extended learning opportunities and emphasize the need for more detailed information about summer programs. Please move this topic to the spring when more summer school information is available. Resource Fair. Parents love the D-LAC Resource Fair because it brings families together and gives essential information. They suggest inviting groups from outside the district and having print flyers at the school so all families can use their resources. El Cap Feedback. Parents appreciate contributing to the El Cap and how feedback is collected. However, they request more transparency on the purpose and confidentiality of the survey and recommend including a privacy disclaimer. Parent Engagement Policy. D-LAC thanks Vanessa Gaily for meeting with the board and explaining the parent involvement policy clearly and kindly. Technology Help. Parents want a simple, hands-on class using Chromebooks to learn how to use school websites and programs. CAVE Conference. Attending the California Association for Bilingual Education CAVE was enriching. Parents are grateful for the district's support and request continuing opportunities, including possible T-shirts and expanding travel coverage like other districts offer. Please allow school community facilitators and interpreters to attend CAVE each year. Parent Classes. The Grupo Crecer classes by Dr. Bravo were impactful, offering therapeutic insight and parenting tools. The disciplina positiva course was well-received for its in-person format and hands-on on strategies that encourage self-reflection and positive parenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Carmen or comments on D-LAC? Before we go to our second part? Oh. She doesn't want to answer questions.
I just have a comment. Thank you for the recommendations. The recommendations are very helpful. Thank you so much.
De nada. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Carmen and Jacqueline. Okay, so moving on to multilingual program updates. It's going to be quick. We have lots to share, but this will just be some quick updates. Just a quick reminder to ground us in our work in multilingual programs is the California Department of Education Learner Roadmap. This policy is based on four principles, and all of our work in multilingual programs is grounded in this roadmap. We do share this at all of our trainings and meetings, and we identify what principle we're working on at that portion so that that helps to ground our work. We also always share our goals for English learners in our trainings and meetings. Just a quick reminder with our work with English language development, we do have these two overarching goals. One is that students acquire English as rapidly and effectively as possible. They acquire that English proficiency. And also that we hold students to the same rigorous standards, and that so they can achieve grade level with our ultimate goal of reclassification. So with that reclassification, they show their English proficiency. We also ground all of our work with an assets-based approach. We believe that multilingual students bring assets to the classroom. This is not an exhaustive list, just some examples. And an assets-based approach is embedded in all work we do with students, staff, and families. Here are some of our most current English learner data. You'll see our numbers of long-term English learners. Long-term English learners are students that have been in the English learner program for six or more years. You'll see our newcomer numbers there. Newcomers are English learner students that have been in our program for three years or less and born outside of the United States. We continue to have over 30 languages represented among our English learners. Spanish, of course, is our largest language, followed by Russian. Our population represents over 3,000 reclassified students. So those are all students from various years that have met that proficiency criteria. And we do have just under 700 students who identified as fluent upon entry into school. It's important to know also that there was a legislative change with TK. So the governor suspended the initial LPAC for our TK students last June. So we do have about 150 TK students that are pending a language fluency because they will now be tested this summer with the initial LPAC. So they're not reflected in that data yet. Parent Engagement. As you heard with DILAC, we've really tried to increase parent engagement efforts. It's been a highlight this year, so this is some of those efforts. Grupo Crecer, which we offer via Zoom, has continued to be our most popular offering. You can see we had 159 graduates this year. We did find that some parents were requesting an in-person option, so we added Disciplina Positiva, which gives them that in-person option. And we had 60 parents, which is great for our first year, out of the gate with Disciplina Positiva. We have the Latino Literacy Project, and we had three schools engage in that opportunity. That's meant to be a much smaller cohort where the first two options can be, everyone can come. Where in our Latino Literacy Project, we do want a smaller cohort. This year, for the first time, we started some secondary parent series that were really facilitated by my secondary newcomer, Tosha, as well as our school community facilitators. And so we had those at five of our school sites. They averaged about 20 parents each, and they were very well-received. And as Carmen shared with you, we had 11 parents attend the CAVE conference and really enjoyed that and got some leadership experiences. We also had two sessions of School Smarts, which is a program that's specific for our immigrant families. And we offered that at Kelly Brook and also at a combined CDM East Bluff. So this is just a few pictures to share with you. That first picture I really love is Carmen and one of our other leadership from DILAC, and they went to the School Smarts workshop and presented on leadership. So how beautiful that our DILAC leadership is sharing with our other parents on leadership. And you'll see those glamorous ladies at CAVE. And the one on the right is one of our parent series sessions at Newport Harbor High School. Reclassification, just as a reminder again, is our process to show that our students are fluent, English proficient. These four requirements are from the state. And so within each of those underneath, you can see some of the more specific criteria. So they do have to show that proficiency on the LPAC of an overall level four. Demonstrate basic skills. Those are some of the assessments we use. Certain grades on their report card. And then, of course, we consult with parents on reclassification. Here's our reclassification data for the last three. Whoa, is it coming? There we go. On the last three years. And I just want to highlight our alternative process for our students on IEPs. We've worked on that the last few years, and you can see this year we really had some concentrated efforts to be sure to give our students on IEPs that opportunity to reclassify. And then finally, just a quick dual immersion update. Our dual immersion programs continue to advance and grow. Our Mandarin and Spanish programs are now up through ninth grade. And so you can see the individual school enrollments, and we have just over 500 students total enrolled in the dual immersion programs. That's what I have for you. Any questions?
I wanted to also say thank you for having the LPAC Parent Night. This is the first time I was able to attend them, and I think it was so helpful. So thank you. So parents know exactly at their school site how they can help their student.
Of course. Any others?
Well, thank you. This is extremely informative, and we think.
Sorry. Trustee Crane.
I just pushed it. So on the slide where it says titled "English Learner Data 2425", I'm trying to understand. So the English learners' number, 2286, is 13% of the student population, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, long-term English learners, 691. So is that 691 into 286, which meaning that 30% of our English learners are LTELs?
Correct.
Okay. And then newcomers is 25%. How does that compare with other districts, and how is it also compared to previous years? Do you have that data?
So every district has got different populations, so that's probably a lengthier conversation. Our LTAL numbers have decreased by about 100-ish students over the last three years. So yeah, so that's exciting. So we are decreasing those numbers by helping our students, you know, the goals that I shared at the beginning and to reclassify. So in the last couple of years, we have decreased those by about 100, just under 100 students each year.
Great.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Anything else? Well, thank you so much. And thank you, Carmen Ramirez. I love your presentations always. We appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Okay. Achievement. We have the report on ensuring intellectual discovery, exploration, and academic excellence for all. Dr. Shields. Idea.
Okay, I'm just told how to get this. All right. Dr. Sear and I will present tonight, and we are excited to share with you the meat on the bone, if you would. This evening, we want to remind everyone that at the Budget Study Session and really in many other times, the Board and Dr. Smith have asked us to really focus on academic excellence for all, to really raise the bar, raise the rigor, make sure that students are thinking critically, and that we're doing all of this through the Board Goals. And we were here tonight to tell you, yes, we heard you. Yes. We also want to remind people there was a concentrated focus on recovery post-COVID, and that was not just us, that was the entire state. And we're at a point now where we're moving forward. We're looking forward. We're talking about both what's happening during the school day with deep thinking and critical thought for our students, as well as thinking about after-school activities, which, I mean ironically enough, that's a point of conversation for tonight for all parents and for us as well. We know why this matters for now, for the future, the types of things that these activities build, the skills, the confidence, the expertise. It allows students to really prepare for the future. We know it matters for littles as they prepare for secondary. It helps secondary as they prepare for post-secondary. So we know, and we just want to asterisk, this has always been our focus, right? But now we're really leaning in to a greater degree. You've heard us many times, several times, feels like many times, talk about what happens during the day. We shared with you the GATE training that teachers go through, the way that looks in the classroom. We've heard questions from you, and we've heard questions from parents, sometimes suggesting that that doesn't feel like enough, that while we know that's what the research says, like, are there ways to fortify it? And so we will present to you tonight a way to fortify that, make sure it's happening, and really saturating the district through what we believe is a very strong training, which we know is a strong training, and really supporting teachers for what is very complex work in the classroom to do the differentiated instruction that we're talking about, that you heard parents earlier talking about tonight. Because children aren't a single label. There are many things. So you can be special needs and GATE. You can be an English learner and GATE. These aren't solo titles, and we're really here to help all students. So we have a plan.
Yeah, so when we think about going into next school year, which would be our first year of implementing this plan, one of the things that we know is that one of the best ways to support teachers is by having other teachers who are outstanding supporting other teachers. So the plan for next year is looking at having four intellectual discovery and interdisciplinary innovation teachers. Say that real fast. No, but with that, the concept is we would have one per zone, and they would be involved in reinforcing and strengthening the work that we already have in regards to the process we use in Newport Mesa for supporting our teachers who have GATE-identified students in their classroom. And by bringing in teachers to focus in each zone, they're going to be able to get into classrooms, support them with a deeper understanding of how to differentiate instruction with depth and complexity, and really bring that aspect during the school day alive. The other three things to talk about is what are some of the initial ideas we have? One of the things we're going to be doing, once these innovation teachers are brought in and we start planning with them, is really trying to refine the work that we're going to do in regards to this first year with Odyssey of the Mind, the Science Showcase, and also looking at Battle of the Books. When we talk about Odyssey of the Mind, Odyssey of the Mind, it teaches students how to develop their own natural creativity. One of the really cool things about Odyssey of the Mind is that the main thrust of the program is having long-term problems that you pose to students. An example of that would be, how do we get students to cross a body of water without getting wet? That's one of the big themes for what Odyssey of the Mind has done over the years. But also, the other part that's tied to the competitions is more of the short-term, critical thinking and hands-on question that is posed to them the day of the competition. So you kind of have two big themes for Odyssey of the Mind. The long-term piece is what you work on back at school sites, and that would be the example of crossing water and not getting wet. But when you have competitions, it's about posing questions to students verbally and providing hands-on activities so that they, in real time, are working through problems that are posed to them. This is a national organization, and they're competitions nationally, so we definitely want to get our feet wet with this and think about ways that we can support our students and provide this opportunity for all students across the district who are interested. Another piece is looking at what can we do as far as a science showcase or an exposition? We know that this year we've gone into Project Lead the Way, which is a curriculum that is used by our science specialists. And by bringing them together and really looking at what can we do to provide opportunities for students after school and thinking about engineering, robotics, just building that. We have some of those models already in our schools. We want to provide those opportunities for all students. So it isn't unique to one or two school sites, but really make it part of our systems and a systematic approach to how we're supporting students. Another one, which started over at East Bluff, we have this year, we have something called Battle of the Books where five of our schools participated. There's a lot of positive energy around this. Students read books. They spend a lot of time reading books, and they come together, and their questions are posed to them. They respond to those. It's had a lot of energy. What we want to do is honor the good work that has already been done that started over at East Bluff and the schools who participated this year, the five. We want to provide that opportunity and analyze student interest across all of our schools. And we want to work closely with our volunteers who already helped to create this because they've been doing this for a number of years. It started to really take off with some energy around it, and we want to be able to expand that out and make it something that could work. So the exact design of it, we're not there yet, but we're going to be working collectively to help look at ways that we can make this an opportunity for all students to be involved. And then thinking out in year two, we know that, you know, that we can't do everything all in the first year. A couple of things that we've considered for next year is looking at, how can we support students with debate or public speaking? We had an opportunity earlier this year to go down and look at students who were doing TED Talks. That's one way to get public speaking going. Another thing is looking at debate. What models for debate are out there? And what can we do in thinking about year two and what that could look like? Because we know students getting in front of their peers and presenting can be a challenge for them, but certainly it's something that we would want to provide an opportunity for all students with. So more to come on that. And then also, we know there are some examples out there that we can look at in regards to having a type of math showcase or exposition where students come together and work through problems related to mathematics. We have brilliant students out there. We really just want to be able to expand our footprint in regards to how we're providing differentiation, depth, and complexity, and opportunities for students to think creatively, especially in the arenas of robotics and engineering. We've got some really good models to look at, but I think we'll get much more refined as we pull our folks together to work collaboratively and really make this happen.
And then we're just really excited. We believe that this energy and momentum, we know we've been world-class. We offer world-class athletics. And being able to do this academically and intellectually as well and really meet the needs of all students, both during the day and after school, we're very excited. You hear us talk about our high-quality staff and everything they're capable of. We're really excited about leaning into that and growing further. So thank you.
This is great. Thank you. We have a question from Trustee Pearson.
How often do I quickly push the button? I don't think I've ever seen a trainer Ashley Anderson on this. Thank you so much. I mean, this is something that, I mean, since when my kids were in school, that my parents' parents have been asking for. Thank you, thank you, thank you. A couple of questions. And it so beautifully, I mean, this is just better than what our parents are asking for. I mean, this is, you just went for the ceiling, I mean, immediately.
Newport Mason.
I'm so excited. A couple of questions, though. First, the four teachers that you talked about, you know, that are going to help do this on our campuses, where will they be housed? Will they be on our campuses?
You know, it's an interesting question. They will spend the majority of their days there. Where people are housed, I mean, our first priority is classroom space for, of course, instruction. So we're always, you know, we've made some changes. We're always moving around and looking for things. But our goal is to be closest to the work, the relationship with teachers, the trust, all of that. We have moved around a little bit, so I don't want to make promises. But they will be somewhere very close to classrooms, and that is their focus.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, I know that there's been some reorganizations with the Battle of the Bay. I mean, Battle of the Books, sorry, Battle of the Books. Do my parents, do my elementary school parents need to worry about this reorganization? Do they need to jump on board and start organizing something?
I think no one should be worried. Everybody should be excited.
They're worried. I'm just.
No. What, and, you know, Dr. Sear is very specific, and we know that there is a great program that exists. So what we want to do first is speak with those people who started this and learn. We have to learn. What we want to see is how we honor that and grow. So no one should worry. No one should worry because we'll just figure a way out that makes everyone feel appreciated, that ensures everyone feels appreciated, and new opportunities are being created. This is not to snuff anybody out or move anything, or no. We really want. We really want to make sure, and Battle of the Books has a national list. I mean, there's kind of is a protocol to follow, and we need to learn that, join whatever we need to join. I mean, you saw that as part of the money that we have to invest. We have to join some of these things and become under their umbrella to have access. And so we'll do that and figure that out. But this is not intended to make anybody worry.
We want to expand it. We truly want to expand it and make it better. And by working closely with the people who have the years already involved in creating what they have, I think that's going to help us take and look at ways that we can augment it and provide the opportunities for more students.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, Trustee Crane.
Thank you. I, I think this is wonderful. For a long time now, we've been hearing our parents across the district, not just a particular zone, to provide opportunities for the advanced learners and and I'm glad that we're not just calling it GATE, because it's not. It should be for all high-achieving advanced students that want to do more and want more. My question is, so these four teachers, are they TOSAs?
Yes, they will be.
Okay, they're TOSAs. Okay, and then will they be, because are some of these, it sounds like some of these programs are within the school day but also after, right? So are you trying just to figure out the logistics of what that's going to look like?
Of course. Working with our extremely successful HR folks, we're looking at the ways in which we use existing staff, right? And we're looking at flex hours and how we do that. And this was designed, that position was designed to have more flexibility in their day so that some of it can be crossover into the afternoon. We know we have the infrastructure of ELOP where we have, we do have examples of people who have flexed their day, both certificated and classified, that starts later to be able to handle that afternoon window, so we have some experience with that. And again, we'll learn and grow into the successful ratio we need to make sure we have staff available some afternoons for that work.
Yeah, we know there's a golden opportunity in regards to going in and supporting our teachers during the day with students. And again, the depth and complexity and all the GATE training, exactly like you said, Mrs. Crane, is it's for all students. And so we know during the school day, that's a golden opportunity to support our teachers with a deeper understanding of differentiation and depth and complexity. As far as after-school programs, Battle of the Books, are there opportunities during the school day, maybe lunchtime? You know, we're going to explore all options. Is there an after-school club? That would make a lot of sense to us. So looking at that, a science expo, same thing. What will fit during the school day and then what can fit in after schools? I think the after-school programs, as far as Odyssey of the Mind, the potential math expo, a science expo, all those pieces are definitely up for consideration as after-school programs. But there will be an interest in looking at what can we, how can those programs also potentially fit into the school day?
Great, thank you. Trustee Ursulou.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. I'll just echo what everyone else said, which I usually hate to do, but I'm going to do it anyway, because this is awesome. So one of the things, you know, that has preoccupied me with our district, and the reason, one of the reasons I ran, was just lack of focus on GATE and GATE students and their special needs that they need, you know, augmented opportunities like this. And so this has been a long time coming, and I'm so thankful for your team for making this happen. And as a former Odyssey of the Mind kid, I can say that that's kind of awesome. So I'm excited that the kids get a chance to do that as well. So just thank you. All aspects of this is just awesome. So thank you.
We'll have to get you involved. That'd be great. Bring you back.
Did you get across the ocean without getting wet?
Trustee Anderson.
I just want to echo this as well. I know, you know, probably 15, 20 years ago, our district was doing a lot with GATE. And so I'm excited to see just an interest and acceleration at all levels. One of the things too that I would love, one of the books that we're approving tonight is for international relations. I would love to see something like a model United Nations for elementary. There's a program for it as well for our dual programs, for IP programs, for our global academy. So it's stuff that we, we don't have to create it. It already exists. It just provides another avenue. I know a lot of our acceleration is often around like robotics, science, math. Not all of us are gifted in those ways. Some of us are gifted in other areas. And so I think just providing a wide range of acceleration would be great. Thank you.
Those are great ideas. Thank you. We are trying to pace ourselves. That's part of it. So that's why we did present a year one and year two, so we can do things well and not just do them, but do them well and continue to have sustainable programs. So thank you for those. Those are great ideas.
Trustee Murphy.
My question is just, besides wondering how Leah crosses the ocean. Yeah, I can't get that visual out. Sorry. It's been a really long day for me, so I really do seriously apologize. Apologies. The Project Lead the Way, is that the same one as Costa Mesa's?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know, really.
Yes.
And you're just going to expand it and go?
Well, I mean, we have the luxury. It is a Newport Mesa luxury to have all of these elementary science teachers and focused on Project Lead the Way at elementary school. We want to amplify that. That is an incredible experience for our students, and we just want to continue to grow and expand their understanding of what that means, how that applies. I'm sure there will be future connections with CTE and what that means in terms of their interests, how they apply that as they move forward. But yes, it is intended to be aligned with middle school and high school because we understand the power of that application.
Great.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I want to say I love this idea. I think it was brought up at Harvard Council PTA, and I've had a ton of parents being so excited about this kind of opportunities for their students and not just for GATE students. I think we, you know, that's great. We can offer extra for GATE, but that's just one test they took and they did well on. It's not necessarily always all of the high achievers or just people that are interested in something, you know?
Right.
So I love the fact that you're expanding this for all students, and I think it's just, it's going to just elevate our district even more. So I'm happy we're doing this. And it just seems, you know, we'll just keep every year adding on or refining. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing.
Well, and we appreciate the support and the motivation and the push, the gentle push from the board to make sure and Dr. Smith, that we're excelling in this area as well. So we appreciate that as well.
Absolutely.
All right, great.
Thank you.
I'm excited. Now to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion? Second. Okay. Moved by Trustee Ursulou, seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yep.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes. All right, motion carries, six zero. Next up, number 21, resolution adoption calendar, 21A, adopt resolution 16-05-25 to establish temporary inter-fund transfers of special or restricted fund monies. Mr. Trader.
Yes, 21.
I said 21. Oh, excuse me. I skipped. It's, sorry, it's wrong on my sheet. It's 20, 22. So guess what? 22 comes before 21. And 22 is discussion action calendar. Approve secondary textbooks for public display. Dr. Torres.
Yes, tonight you have in front of you a list of secondary advanced placement textbooks that will be on public display for 30 days, starting tomorrow, if approved this evening. Everything from the social science series to some of our science coursework. So it's all advanced placement.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by, was that Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Seconded by Trustee Ursulou. A roll call vote.
Student Board Member, Devani Bustos.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Okay, the vote was six oh. Motion carries. 22B, first reading and adoption of modification of board policy. Dr. Smith.
Our district has a board policy committee that meets, reviews policies, makes edits, conducts that first read, which allows them to come to the board meeting and then skip the second read, and if they choose, adopt the policies. We have trustees Ursulou, Murphy, and Pearson on that committee, and it's staffed by Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Torres. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. It's been a long day for me, too. Did we start our day together? Yeah. Last year. Well, stay here. You'll have another chance. I don't know if the trustees wanted to speak to the...
Does anyone on the policy committee want to talk about the changes?
Some of them are brought to us from staff that, so perhaps Dr. Torres would like to address.
Yeah, briefly, thank you so much. And we had several policies brought forward, and most of these were what we consider compliance or regulatory. So just briefly, employee use of technology, just include elements of AI in their acceptable use agreement. Brought forward is our UCP policy that was directed by federal program monitoring with slight modifications in regards to instructional materials. Our inter-district policy for transfers, really just making a quick modification to language saying that we can do a review of those transfers every five years if we'd like. And then we have one policy brought forward for differential graduation competency standards, which was the alternative diploma pathway for our students who are in our specialized pathways in special ed. And then the business office brought forward information regarding the Irvine Company endowment.
Do we have any discussion? Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Ursulou.
Student Board Member, Devani Bustos. Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes, and I have a point of order question. Do we want to?
Yes.
To do the second reading and wave.
Yes, that's true. It did, we did say first reading and adoption of modifications.
Yeah, I didn't wave the second.
I didn't wave the second read, just from the initial, from the write-up.
The recommended motion on the item is it's recommended that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the board policy editing team to conduct the first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt the revisions.
The title's usually slightly different on here, so I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Also, thank you, Mr. Trader, for adding the Irvine Company. It's very exciting to have a policy about.
Trustee Crane.
Yeah, I think I said yes. All right, motion carries, six zero. And now moving on to the resolution adoption calendar. Let's redo the resolution adoption 16-05-25 to establish temporary inter-fund transfers of special or restricted fund monies. Mr. Trader.
As you're aware, the district has a cash drive period between July and December. The most economical way to solve that issue is to borrow money from funds that are in our other funds. And this resolution asks for that authority to be able to do that. You will notice, though, there is one exception on the other funds is that we do exclude borrowing from the Irvine Company endowment.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Ursulou. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. 21B, adopt resolution 17-05-25 recognizing May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Classified School Employee Week. Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you. In honor and recognition of our classified staff, we bring forward and ask the board to approve a resolution acknowledging this week as the Classified Appreciation Week. I think we would all agree that our classified employees are essential. Without them, the day-to-day operations of our schools just simply wouldn't be possible. They create that safe, clean, organized, and welcoming environment that allows our students to learn and thrive. Their work may not always be in the spotlight, but its impact is everywhere, everywhere. And I think that Amy Ching, our CSCA president, stated it beautifully earlier tonight when she was sharing that. And I would concur that I think all of us at some point of our lives can recall a school employee that left that lasting impact. Maybe it was the custodian that you saw each day with a smile or someone doing, cleaning the grounds or preparing a field for your event and being appreciative of that. The bus driver that noticed that you were there and when you weren't there. And, or the office staff who calms you or provides you kindness when you're having a rough morning. And we all know that some of us were in the office more than others, and that was really critical in our making it through our school career. So the appreciation for our classified staff goes much more and beyond a one-week event. We acknowledge all of their hard work and dedication that support our students every day. So we ask that the board approve the resolution tonight.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Our student board member has a comment to make.
Sorry.
Yes.
Devani.
I just want to say that I really like that you guys are implementing this week because my dad was a custodian for the district for four, three or four years at Costa Mesa High School, so it's nice to see that other people are getting that recognition. So thank you for that.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank your dad for all the hard work. All right, so it has been moved and then seconded. Ursulou, and a roll call vote, Sam.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero. All right, 21C, adopt resolution number 18-05-25 authorizing a mitigated negative declaration for purposes of satisfying the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA, for the Costa Mesa High School stadium expansion project. Mr. Trader.
In anticipation of work at the Costa Mesa High School athletic facilities, we have circulated a report of that work to the general public and public agencies to solicit comments on the proposed project. And we circulated that report for 30 days, beginning on March 31st, 2025, and ending on April 30th, 2025. And in response to that, we received one comment, and we have determined that there are mitigation measures to reduce the potentially significant impacts on the environment to a less-than-significant level. And so we are asking to adopt this resolution.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Ursulou. Let's go. Oh, a comment, excuse me. Trustee Anderson, before the vote.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I was going to ask, so there was one comment that was received about this, but I somehow missed it until just right now. And it doesn't have a section where we responded to the comment. I just wanted to make sure.
We did respond to that comment. Was that the question, or?
Yeah, we just didn't get it as of, I think, going forward, if we can get comments. So I mean, if somebody, if there's a CEQA concern and someone sends it, I didn't, I don't think we got it. So I think just before we're deciding on it, I would love to see it.
Understand. Certainly.
It seems like it's okay, but yeah.
But we have a motion in a second. Let's vote and then move on there. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, six zero. Okay, motion carries six zero. Twenty-one D, adopt resolution nineteen dash zero five dash twenty-five designation, uh, the observance of Washington Day on February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-six and Lincoln Day on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-six. Ms. Ocean?
Yes, thank you. These two holidays, Washington Day and Lincoln Day, there is a provision in the ed code to move them to another date than their traditional observation, um, date. And so as a district, we have moved those in our twenty-five, twenty-six calendar and by doing so, that is how we create the president's recess in February so that the whole week is, um, is a non-student week. So we ask that the board pass the resolution.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Pearson, seconded by trustee Ursulou. Um, roll call vote. Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries six oh. Now moving on to informal reports. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, people have mentioned that, um, tis the season, so I don't want to mention all of the amazing awards events that, that we've been to. They're every day, all day. But I did want to point out, uh, a number of community events. Um, I didn't get to go to Les Miller. I'm sure somebody here will speak to that tonight. But again, the continued support financially for our students to realize their dreams, going to college, thank you to them. Uh, the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation for their continued support of our teachers and innovations in the classroom, grateful for them. Um, trustee Anderson, trustee Crane, myself, a bunch of staff, were at SOI last night. They're up to five million dollars in scholarship awards to our students. Thank you to them. And then this Saturday was Love Costa Mesa. So I had a chance to go and visit a couple of the projects and see the launch and the, the community coming together, dancing, which I didn't participate in and, and other things. And then they went to beautify our campuses because they understand that students feel better and learn more when they feel better about their environment, right? Um, so thank you to them for that work. So Coral has this great tagline in her emails. For those of you that actually read all of her emails, they're lengthy, so I skip it a lot of the times. But it, it says in community, right? I think that's poignant. Uh, it's only in community that we do the most important work. So thank you to the community for once again exemplifying what community really means and the benefit that it has for our students. So muchismo gracias.
All right, I'm gonna start with, um, trustee Crane and we'll make our way this way.
Okay. Well, um, since i- in the spirit of, uh, recognition week and night, um, I'd like to just really show my gratitude for every single person that makes up our district, from our students, um, to our staff, classified, certificated, to our exec cabinet, ju- parents, community, just, you know, it's just, we're, we're very lucky to be here in, in, in Newport Mesa. And you know, it's, it's wonderful when we hear from parents that come up here and they're so genuine. They're, they're, they're showing their respect for us by, by being, um, open and candid. And of course, we're gonna listen, right? And so, and we're gonna move forward because we can always do better. So gratitude and recognition to all of Newport Mesa, start to finish, starting with the students. Um, it is a very busy season. Um, I had the privilege of going to the grand opening of the, uh, the best center in, um, one of the, the newest best center in Costa Mesa. And, um, I just was, sorry, share, I'm sorry, share ourselves. Thank you. Um, in, um, Costa Mesa and our families are, um, gonna be wowed by the services offered there. Um, they're, they're, not only are they doing the, the, the medical, um, services, they're also, eh, adding, um, ophthalmology and of course dentistry. And there's even gonna be a pharmacy that's gonna be onsite. So it's just top-notch equipment. Um, it's just really wonderful. I'm very happy for our families that are gonna use those services. Um, CDM, just, uh, we were at the, um, we just attended, trustee Pearson and I attended the, um, athletics signing, uh, for our collegiate athletes who are moving on. Um, and there were twenty-eight athletes that signed on and were recruited by colleges across the country, all east and west, all the way to the west coast, west coast to the east coast. Um, very, uh, w- we offer a lot of pathways and that's one of them for kids to, to succeed. And so that was a proud moment. A lot of parents in the, in the theater attending and just a lot of, you know, many, many thanked their coaches and their families and that was just wonderful to see. Um, I dropped in yesterday at the swim program. Um, the, the, uh, the college park is doing a swim program through, you know, our coop- our cooperative and collaborative efforts with our nonprofits. It was the most exciting, heartwarming experience. Uh, the kids were having so much fun, but on top of that, the skills that they were, uh, they're, that they were acquiring was for safety that, I mean, that could be a life-saving, um, opportunity by just learning how to swim. But it was, it was really heartwarming to see, um, families there, moms and dads that are watching their kids swim. And then also seeing the interaction of, um, the coaches, the swim coaches. And, um, another part of the, um, the program that I also appreciated was there's a classroom element to it. And when I walked into the classroom, there was a lesson on lightning and safety. That's how it relates to water. Stop. Um, I did happen, I did happen to have a parent there that unsolicitedly sent me a text and said, um, uh, tomorrow Wednesday, the classes end and Tiffany is sad and says, "Why are they ending? I like them and have learned a lot." She says she wants me to sign her up for swimming classes, so today I'm going to ask at the office. Um, thank you, Ms. Carol, for supporting the children and for having activities like this. So this is unsolicited, unsolicited feedback. And then when I spoke to one of the girls, Isabella, she's like in, I think, third grade, I said, "On a scale of one to ten, what do you give it?" She looked at me and she said, "Ten thousand." How cute is that? That right there says it all. So thank you, everyone. Uh, oh, and also, uh, congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-five. And, uh, please, as Martha Flor Aris says, make right decisions, be safe and enjoy your, your successes and it's mission accomplished. Thank you.
Yes, it's been very busy. I was, um, really excited to be able to join so many of our, um, lead, our district leaders at the AXA, um, awards to honor Dr. Hogard and Lisa Snowden. Um, Dr. Hogard is just an amazing educator and so it's great to have her. Um, Community Schools Advisory Group happened this week and it doubled from the first one that we had, which was awesome to see. Um, and the title, the, the discussion this, this time was around belonging. So it was just, um, a wonderful time to hear from parents how their children had experienced belonging, what that looked like and how we could increase it. Um, I attended the SOI Grant Awards and then also the Whittier School Site Council. It was interesting, um, to go to one at a different school, um, several years ago. And then this one, um, because usually I can't, I haven't been able to attend due to the timing of them. But the one at Whittier, um, talked, the parents were super engaged and wanting to have more communication with their teachers and having a really clear pipeline as to what is expected of them as parent partners, which I thought was really wonderful to hear. And so they really want some like concrete ways and maybe some new systems that they can work with their children. So, um, it was really great to hear that specifically. Um, and then the Les Miller Awards was wonderful. Our very, very high achieving students, um, including, um, some of our students that, to me, it was cool to see the first student from early college high school that, um, is attending Stanford, which is awesome. Um, and then the D-LAC Awards, which again, Sanborn was packed out. I think that the D-LAC group has just really become its own community and it's wonderful to see, um, including our amazing Keith, who, who knew that Keith Carmona was an amazing dancer, um, and danced with Carmen. And so it was just, it was a wonderful time, um, of community. And I think that's, oh, the last thing I think is the, um, the PTA lunch. Um, it's been great to see the change for particularly some of the schools in the area seven that only had a few PTA representatives before. Each of them had, um, a really strong team and over the summer we're gonna be putting together, um, I'm gonna get a couple of the leaders from the school site council and the PTAs to create a leadership team. So that, that was kind of solidified at that lunch. That's all. Thank you.
Um, I started off the month at Anderson's Coffee with the Police. Um, and somehow Anderson was able to get the horse unit, the horses, the police horses at their campus, of course. Um, so of course the kids' excitement about the police, um, being on campus was doubled, tripled, um, fun to watch, fun, fun to see. Um, attended so many award ceremonies for our kids, um, or, or showcases, the Harbor View, um, Gate Showcase, Newport Coast Elevatories Open House, um, the District Art Show and the CDM Athletic Signing. Um, the kids just continue to amaze us and what they're, what they're producing and what they're doing. It's so great to watch. Um, on the other end with our, our parents, I was able to attend the Zone Pack Meeting, Harbor Council, um, Awards Luncheon and a CDM PTA meeting. And all these events, um, celebrated our volunteers and our parents, um, which were fantastic. I think the highlight though was the CDM PTA, um, meeting where they have a tradition where the senior moms always give advice to the younger moms in the, um, audience. I think I hosted this at my house probably eight years in a row. So I, a, a, a little biased towards it. But I think two themes that came out of that, that night, that day was that our schools are helping, that our kids don't just need good grades, they also need to tell a story. Um, and these parent, at least four or five parents have mentioned that our school, our district, our teachers, our principals are helping the kids find their story, um, not just the good grades. And I thought that really touched, that was, it was very heartfelt. The other wasn't really a theme. It was one brave mom getting up to say that her advanced perfect student's child, perfect, perfect child had failed flat this last semester, had gotten the senioritis and was really in, in danger of not graduating. Um, she really wasn't the only one. There were a couple of other moms that said the same thing. And it was so cute with this one instance that you saw Dr. Haley in the background. He just immediately raised his hand, "I got you. I got you. Don't worry." Uh, we had the counselor in the room saying, "You're not the only one. Trust me, I've got a list and we're gonna get through this." And you had the other moms in the room basically getting up and hugging. Uh, you know, a mom who was crying and laughing at the same time. So it was just beautiful to see not just the parent volunteers, but the community come together, our staff, our principal, our wonderful principal, to get these kids where they need to be, not graduating then. So it was, again, another nice, warm, heartfelt moment.
I'm gonna adhere to the president's guidance to not speak unless you've been to one of your committee meetings. And I haven't been to one in a couple of weeks, so.
Good.
But, uh, looking forward to all the graduation award and award ceremonies. So, go Mesa. It's gonna be fun.
Yes, it's just a busy time. So everybody hang in there and hydrate.
What about the caffeine part?
Oh, yeah. Well, I wanted to say, yes, it's a great, busy time. Um, I'm sure we're gonna be at a million events the next two weeks. And this is always like the chicken soup for the soul, right? Um, gonna see the, all the, all the great accomplishments. And, um, with that, I'd like to close the meeting at eight forty-three. Thank you.